Thanks, I hope. We're gonna go ahead and get started, if you'd all have a seat, please. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are David Rosacher, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslow, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Lisa Agans, our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. We have no changes to the consent agenda, so I'm gonna start reading the consent cases. No, it was, but it was taken off of the current. Okay, agenda item number six, case C-10-20-154, C-7-20-155. Applicant Dan Downs. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in the G.C. District along with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. This was laid over from our August 5th meeting. Location: 1809 Madison Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Moving on. Agenda item number fifteen, case C-10-20-167, C-12-20-168. Applicant Eleona Hunt. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Benson Gardens Replat 22, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R2 to R5. Location: 2306 North 79th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number sixteen, case C-10-20-169, C-12-20-170. Applicant Nolan Austin. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Silver Valley, a subdivision inside city limits with waiver to Section 5382, street grading, along with rezoning from R2 to DR and R4. Location: Northeast of 72nd Street and Silver Valley Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do? Okay, it will be removed. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number seventeen, case C-12-20-171. Applicant McNeil Company. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Country Club Estates Replat 2, a minor plat inside city limits. Location: 6825 State Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nineteen, case C-10-20-173, C-12-20-174. Applicant HRC Development LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Anchor View, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R5. Location: 17550 Potter Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty, case C-10-20-177, C-12-20-178. Applicant Woodsonia North Streams LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of North Streams Replat 1, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from DR and R4 to DR and R4 pending. Location: Southwest of 202nd and I Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-one, case C-10-19-219, C-12-19-220. Applicant Falcone Land Development. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Estancia Lots 513 through 523, a minor plat outside city limits with rezoning from AG and DR to R4. Location: Northwest of 210th and Fort Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-two, case C-10-20-180. Applicant Timothy Binock. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GI to R5. Location: 1502 William Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-three, case C-10-20-181. Applicant Riverstone Custom Homes. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R3 to R5. Location: 7022 North 54th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-five, case C-10-20-184. Applicant 1213 Jones LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located within an ACI-1 area of civic importance overlay district. Location: 2564 Harney Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-six, case C-10-20-21. Applicant 85 CBs LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Flanagan Point pending. Location: Northeast of 180th and Fort Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-seven, case C-10-10-100. Applicant Lockwood Development. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Sterling Ridge. Location: Southeast of 132nd and Pacific Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-eight, case C-10-20-185. Applicant Jackson Family Companies LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from G.C. to C.C. And location: Southwest of 40th Street and Bedford Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-nine, case C-8-20-187. Applicant Mark Sanford. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow funeral services in the GI District. Location: 9370 North 45th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number thirty, case C-8-20-188, C-8-20-191. Applicant Karen Buddhist Society of Omaha. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow religious assembly in the DR District and approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location: 9861 North 60th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-one, case C-7-98-216, C-10-20-186. Applicant Westside Community Schools, School District 66. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R2 District along with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: Southeast of 90th and Pacific Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-two, case C-7-18-139. Applicant Rita Hamza. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow food sales limited in the LO District. Location: 1938 North 85th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-three, case C-14-20-189. Applicant, property owner. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of the East-West Alley located between South 5th Street and South 6th Street and between Woolworth Avenue and Pine Street, abutting lots 1 through 8, Block 22. Credit Founseer Edition. Location: Northeast of 6th and Pine Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. And finally, agenda item number thirty-four, case C-14-20-190. Applicant, Planning Board. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of the North-South Alley located south of Indiana Street and abutting Nebraska Department of Transportation right-of-way along North Freeway, along with vacation of Indiana Street east of North 28th Avenue. Location: Southeast of Indiana Street and North 28th Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay?
Would you like to add that to consent or testimony?
It's on consent right now for approval. Did you want to take it off of the consent? If it's on consent for approval, we're gonna vote on it, and no further action will be taken today. And it's on for approval.
I just wanted more information about that case. I believe my property is right there. I don't know if I'm late in the case to do something about it.
No, we can take it off consent if you would like, sir. If you want to speak, if you want to come out and give testimony, we have to take it off of the consent agenda. Okay? All right.
If I could recommend, we can take it off consent. We also do have a representative from Public Works in the back of the room. James could speak to you while we proceed. If he gives you the information that you feel is adequate, you wouldn't need to stay the whole time, and we could...
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna be the last...
You guys can carry on while I speak with this director. I can decide whether...
Yep, I'm gonna go ahead and take it off, and then if you're not here, then we'll be good. All right. Okay, we're gonna take that off of the consent agenda, item number thirty-four. Now then, do we have a motion for consent items that are on for approval?
Motion to approve agenda items six, seven, two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? Please, sir, will you report the vote?
Rosacher?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Second. And secondly, so will you please report the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Those items are on consent. No further action will be taken today. You are welcome to stay, or you are free to leave. We're gonna start with the first four agenda, first five, I'm sorry. First five agenda items are administrative items only. There will be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one, case C-10-20-88, C-12-20-89. Applicant Bennington Public Schools. Request: Final plat approval of 168 Snowden Commons, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Location: Northwest of 168th Street and Rachel Snowden Parkway. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat application is nearly identical to the approved preliminary plat, which came before the Planning Board on June 3rd of this year, and then approved by City Council on July 21st, earlier in the summer. There's seventy-three acres subdivided into two lots and eight outlots. There are no specific items that I need to point out. The applicant has finalized the traffic study, I believe, and will be working on the items for the final subdivision agreement prior to City Council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4 and approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request onto City Council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number two, case C-10-18-244, C-12-18-245. Applicant Lauren Johnson, Celebrity Homes, Omaha. Request: Final plat approval of Woodbrook Lots 103 through 252, Outlots D through G, formerly Sagewood Point, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location: Northwest of 180th and Fort Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the third phase related to Woodbrook. The original preliminary plat, which was called Sagewood Point at the time, was approved by City Council February 2017. As I mentioned, there's since been divided into three phases. First phase was approved later in 2017. The second phase, which was then named Woodbrook, was approved by City Council in 2019, and this is the third and final phase on the northwest corner of the intersection. This will replat the property into one hundred and fifty single-family residential lots and four outlots within forty-four acres. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of Woodbrook, lots 103 to 252, and outlots D through G, subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval relative to Phase Three, submittal of an approved noxious weed plan, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Do we have a motion?
Motion through the final plan of Woodbrook, lots 103 through 252, and outlots D through G, subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval relative to Phase Three, submittal of an approved noxious weed plan, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number three, case C-10-20-5, C-12-20-6. Applicant Lanahan Development. Request: Final plat approval of Sanctuary Ridge, lots 1 through 79, outlots A through H, a subdivision outside the city limits along with rezoning from AG to R4. Portions of the property are located within the Floodway Overlay District. Location: Northwest of West Center Road and 222nd Street. Eric?
Preliminary plat was originally seen by the Planning Board in January of this year and approved by City Council of March 17, 2020. Since that time, the applicant has decided to split up the final plat into a phased project. So this is the first phase of Sanctuary Ridge, seventy-nine single-family residential lots and eight outlots. There are a few items worth mentioning that the applicant has addressed, one of those being providing acceptable access for the remnant existing residential property on the western portion of the site. They've also been working with Public Works on the median approach to 229th Street and have come to an acceptable solution. There are a few items that will need to be finalized prior to Council, including placing the building envelopes on the tree mitigation plan, final plat and slopes analysis. That being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4, approval of the final plat subject to addressing the four conditions in the recommendation report prior to City Council.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from AG to R4 and approval of the final plat subject to addressing the four conditions outlined in the recommendation report prior to forwarding this request to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacher?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number four, case C-10-19-245, C-12-19-246. Applicant Walnut Grove LLC. Request: Final plat approval of Hanover Falls Center, lots 1 and 2, Outlot A, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R6. Location: Northwest of 156th and State Streets. Eric?
The Planning Board actually recommended approval of a final plat for this project back in July. However, prior to proceeding to City Council, the applicant decided to make it a phased development. Therefore, they've brought back the first phase final plat, which includes the two multifamily residential lots and one outlot. The other eight proposed mixed-use residential, or eight mixed-use lots are not included and will be in a subsequent phase, so there is no mixed-use development agreement that will go to City Council at this time. Just two items of note. We'll need to confirm with the applicant that there are no wetlands being negatively impacted by this first phase. There will be an overall mitigation plan that will be necessary, but most of that will be in future plat phasings. The second item is the current paving plan that was submitted shows paving plans that extend the entire length of Outlot A. Public Works is asking to pull back the paving plan so that it is not in as close proximity to the State Street to make sure we don't have any vehicles that potentially take a shortcut through the rough terrain. So they'll need to finalize those with the paving plans and subdivision agreement prior to City Council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R6, approval of the final plat subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report prior to City Council.
Any comments, questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I motion for approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R6 and approval of a final plat subject to meeting the four conditions in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number five, case C-10-20-73, C-12-20-74. Applicant Jeffrey A. Silver. Request: Final plat approval of Hartwood Estates, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R4 and MU to R4 and MU. Location: Northwest of 151st Street and Pine Street. Eric?
Okay, this final plat, preliminary plat for this case was before the Planning Board back in May, and then City Council approved on July 14, 2020. The proposed plan is virtually identical to the approved preliminary plat, creates fifty-one single-family residential lots. Actually, two of those are zoned mixed-use, so forty-nine single-family residential lots and then six outlots. There is the need to provide a trail connection to Harvey Oaks Park, so we'll need to finalize that on the mixed-use major, or mixed-use development agreement minor amendment, and then also a sidewalk connection to the edge of the boundary on the southwest portion of the site. The other item to note is the tree canopy analysis and mitigation plan. We have finalized an acceptable overall plan for the entire portion of this development south of Pacific Street. They're under the twenty-five percent threshold, so there is no mitigation required. We did have staff go out on the site to make sure there weren't any trees cut down, and everything that was proposed to being preserved within the plat boundaries has been. I know there was a few emails about maybe some other trees closer to 144th Street. I can answer any questions on that, or the applicant is here if you have any specific questions. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R4 and MU to R4 and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable minor amendment to the mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
Yeah, if I might, if I might ask...
If I might ask the applicant to come forward, I'd like to ask just a couple of questions.
Joe Flagspierd with Lampar Neerson, 14710 West Dodge Road. We're the civil engineer here on behalf of the applicant, Bart Emanuel.
Bart Emanuel, applied underwriters, 10805 Old Mill Road.
Great. Bart, probably for you, the question's probably gonna be for you, and Joe may be interject if you'd like, but at the last meeting, when you were present before the Planning Board, the last meeting, we talked about these trees. And if you remember, there was someone from the public that came and testified about the importance... And if you remember, there was someone from the public that came and testified about the importance of making sure none of those trees got on the south border, got removed. As Eric alluded to, there were some reports that there were some trees taken out closer to Pacific Street.
Close to the one hundred and forty-fourth.
One hundred and forty-fourth, I'm sorry, one hundred and forty-fourth Street. And I remember asking the question of, I think it was you at the time, would you agree to make sure that none of those trees were removed without prior consent or at least discretion with the neighbors?
Yes.
Yet they were removed.
Going forward.
Yeah, so can you talk about that first one, then I got a follow-up question to that?
So what part do you want me to add?
The trees that were removed, why they were removed and if you had any.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
And I think I explained this the last time, but we, what I asked my team to do was go out there and cut down anything that was dead.
Right.
Clean up that entire tree line all the way along Harvey Oaks. And they did, they went in there and they were cutting out all the dead stuff and cleaning it up, but I stated the last time, there was tires and trash and just junk laying in this tree line and we wanted to clean it up, not only for our benefit, but for the benefit of the Harvey Oaks people also. And I also told them to cut down any little scrub brush that, you know, that was a mulberry tree. And so they did. And in doing all this, they accidentally crossed over the property line of the person right up against one hundred and forty-fourth Street. They did cut down a couple of mulberry trees and they did cut down a dead stump and some dead branches. And we've already reached out to that property owner to make sure that everything is made right.
Okay, and I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely.
Doing that, and I totally agree with cutting out all the dead stuff and cleaning it up because that can just be a problem.
Absolutely.
Totally agree with that now, follow up with that, so now we're moving into your residential development phase of this and it looks really nice in there.
Thank you.
But again, I'm going to ask the question, will you guarantee that no trees will be removed along that southern property line?
Absolutely.
Other than the dead stuff that you're talking about there?
Yeah.
Clean it up a little bit without, and if you are intending to do that, at least have a conversation with the neighborhood and make sure that they're aware of that.
Absolutely, and I would ask Joe, I don't think there's any trees that are slated to be cut down on this.
Not on the south property line which you mentioned, in the tree canopy analysis that we submitted to the city, there is a group of trees on the west property of the estates adjacent to the Pacific Hollow neighborhood.
Right.
It's a pretty small amount that's really necessary for grading. That's the only additional tree canopy that we have proposed to remove since, you know, the original approval of the south.
Do you know how many, approximately how many trees you're talking about?
I don't know how many trees. I couldn't even tell you the square footage offhand, but that has been something since the preliminary plat approval that we have been coordinating with planning department on an acceptable canopy removal there.
And I'll take it upon myself to go a step farther, we will reach out to whichever property owners abut up to where these trees are located. And we will reach out to them and explain to them exactly why these trees needed to be cut down, you know, in order to get the proper grading that we needed for this development. And again, we're planning, I'm currently looking for more ground to plant more trees. We want to plant somewhere between ten and twenty thousand trees this fall in a nursery. So we're going to be growing more and more trees, you know, to actually give away to the neighborhoods that surround this area and the people that will be coming into our development. We're just going to be giving these trees to them.
Yeah. And I appreciate you making that, that offer and I would encourage you to do that, that's I think the right solution to that.
Okay.
And you are planting a lot of trees, I drive by there almost every day and I see all those new trees that have been already been planted there.
Okay.
Along Pacific Street there, so really nice work with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I can say the western portion that was alluded to has been accounted for in our analysis and the appropriate mitigation plan, so staff is aware of that in our documentation.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the rezoning from R four and MU to R four and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable minor amendment to the mixed use development agreement. An approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council for final action.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, we're going to take agenda items number seven and eight together. Agenda item number seven, case C three dash twenty dash one fifty-nine. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of an amendment to the land use element, transportation element and the urban design element of the city's master plan regarding transit oriented development. Location, City of Omaha and the three mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And agenda item number eight, case C three dash twenty dash one sixty. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of amendment to chapter fifty-five regarding transit oriented development and accessory dwelling units. Location, City of Omaha and the three mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. Before we hear from anybody else, Dave, Planning Director, Dave Fanslaw, wanted to make a few comments.
Sure, yeah, thanks. Staff is going to go through the nuts and the bolts of the master plan amendments and the code changes, but I wanted to take an opportunity to thank everybody who's been involved in the process and starting off with staff, they've, as I said at the pre-meeting, they did an outstanding job. This isn't something that, you know, took us six months to do this, we've been working on this and thinking about this for four or five years. So this is hopefully the, the second to the last step in the process of, of making what we think is going to be some transformational opportunities along the corridor to, you know, to actually happen. If things pass here today, it'll go on to city council and hopefully we're successful there as well, but I think, like I said in the pre-meeting, staff has done an outstanding job. I don't know how many hundreds of hours that you guys have put in, but I appreciate it and I know the planning board appreciates it, you know, this isn't the first time we've talked to you guys about TOD, but this is the first time we're going to ask you to, you know, vote on the meat and potatoes of it, I guess. So I just wanted to say those thank yous and thank the board for listening to us for a couple of years, talking about this. You know, it started back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, so it's been a number of years, there's been a number of people involved. You know, we had an action team, we had a stakeholders group. You know, the action team was Planning Department, Mayor's Office, Public Works, Metro Transit and the Omaha Chamber. The stakeholders group involved dozens of people from the community, from neighborhood representatives, developers, designers and other stakeholders who were just basically interested in the project. So again, I'm going to let staff, you know, they've, they've been the ones working on it night and day, so I'm going to let them go ahead and make their presentation, but I just wanted to say those thank yous before they got started.
Thank you, Dave. Eric, did you want to add anything? Derek, you're presenting, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Derek Miller, City Planning Staff. Dave stole some of my thunder, so I could quickly go through some of these slides, which is great. Before getting into the two cases, just take a step back and talk about what TOD is or transit oriented development. As planners, we like to use TOD and ACI and those types of things and sometimes it can be very confusing and this is in that area of can be confusing sometimes and quite complex. But TOD is a development centered around or located within a walking distance of a transit station or stop. And the main point here is TOD is, creates the environment for the pedestrian, a good environment for, for walking because all trips on transit start from and, and end with transit, so getting on the bus and getting off the bus. So TOD creates that pedestrian friendly environment. Dave covered some of this, but these two cases and associated cases has been a lot of work, not by only staff, but also our stakeholder committee and our action team as well. So we officially began this process in November of two thousand eighteen. And from two thousand eighteen into two thousand nineteen, we held a series of public meetings, basically thirteen public meetings. And then from there on, we worked through with our stakeholder committee, further refining the package that's in front of you today. These are the names of, it's very hard to read, and this is also on our, on our website, but the action team, again, that's our technical staff, both in the city as well as over at Metro Transit, MAPPA and the Omaha Chamber. On the right side is the stakeholder group. Again, we wanted a good cross-section that represented the corridor, the Dodge corridor from tenth to six eighty. Last year at this time, you, this board recommended approval and was approved by council, the first master plan amendment, again, to the transportation element, the urban design element and the land use element. And what it really did was identify those orbit nodes along the corridor. The major thing that this did was fully define what TOD is and what its intentions are, so it defined the policy of TOD. So that was approved last September. What's in front of you today is a master plan amendment, again, to those same three elements, but the major amendment is to the future land use. And this map here is the, what we as staff refer to as the orange blob, basically is the, is the meat of, of this amendment. So I clearly identifying where the TOD area is within our, on our future land use map. And it also encompasses that pinkish area of the downtown metro mixed use area, so everything, all the policy of, of the TOD is not only in the orange area, but also in the pink area. A lot of time was spent on clearly defining the boundaries of this map by, both on research on staff, from the existing conditions, existing land use rights, as well as confirmation from our stakeholder committee. The second part of, of the package of amendments is to chapter fifty-five and that's where it gets a little confusing, again, you thought TOD was bad, now you look at these six districts of MX, MUR and so on. But basically the, what this amendment is doing is adding those six TOD districts to chapter fifty-five. And really gets into the building sizes and the building uses, and I'll jump right into that. So we're really going from a traditional zoning regulation to more of a form-based regulation where we're less talking about the use and it's more focusing on the building form. It also includes uses, operations, operation of those uses, but it really focuses on the design and form of what can be built, what we'd like to see. And it really gets into that second bullet point, and I joked earlier at pre-planning board, and I don't like to use a lot of words and I broke a rule of my own, but really focus on that second bullet point. Really focuses on physical character of the buildings and the relationship of buildings to each other and to the street, so that's really what we're trying to do here. So on the building sizes, that's the TOD one through four, with one being the most intensive, that's nearest the, the transit stop or station. And TOD four is the less intensive, so it tiers down from each station location. And then on the building uses, really it's mixed use and residential and then also mixed urban residential, mixed neighborhood residential and single family accessory. So again, the building form, basically the footprint and the height and the building uses. So really based upon this map and a lot of time spent with the TOD stakeholder committee and staff, we developed this more sub-district map. A lot of discussion was around this map. And how we got to that map, the sub-district map, to really calibrate and figure out the best locations for the intensity and the uses along the Dodge Street corridor. We used these six criteria, what we spoke about earlier at pre-planning board. Proximity, again, I just spoke about that. Another major thing that really, we really got into and it was, we spent a lot of time on this because the existing land use rights that exist along Dodge Street corridor are varied. And have changed over time since the City of Omaha adopted our first zoning ordinance in the late nineteen teens. But we took into account the existing zoning rights, future land use, what exists there today. Also getting back to that form-based code where you have that relationship to the street type. So we looked at the street type and number four, the neighborhood survey. And what that means is the time we spent at our public meetings to discuss with everyone in attendance, what they felt the area could become or should become. So we used a lot of public engagement from those public meetings as well as our input from our stakeholder committee. Then again, the transition to scale, spoke about that a little bit earlier. And then also the preservation of existing neighborhoods. So what that means is anything that has an R one through R three contiguous homogeneous type zoning existing today and is in a historic registered place, those areas were removed from that map. And again, a lot of time, I went through that really quickly, but a lot of time was spent on this map and a lot of comments were spent on this map. Besides the public comments that we had during the public meetings, we also held a public comment period from May to into June and we received a lot of comments. And the comments that we received, we took a lot of those into account and also during that time, we spent some time with our neighborhood associations within the corridor, had several meetings with them. Again, took their comment and further refined this map. So went through that relatively quickly. It's, like Dave said, this is, has been a lot of work over the last two years, really the last five or six years looking into it. The last part of this, the second case, is the inclusion of accessory dwelling units. And accessory dwelling units, a lot of people referred them, referred to them as mother-in-law suites or granny flats. I don't know where you're going to put your father-in-law, I guess, but what it really means is a different type of housing that's less intrusive to the neighborhood. We know these exist in Omaha today through our jurisdiction, we don't know of any that have been approved through a formal process. So what this is really doing is formalizing it and making this tool available. ADUs at this point in time will be allowed within the TOD area as I showed earlier. And we feel it's a good way to add additional housing units into neighborhoods and that are less intrusive. The big part of this is that with the regulations that we proposed, there are things that people have to follow, so they actually meet the character of the neighborhood. And that's one thing I failed to talk about earlier on the TOD is we used a lot of our experience that, from our urban design regulations that were adopted over ten years ago, twelve years ago. Took that experience, a lot of the experience that we've gone through with the PUR or the Planned Unit Redevelopment Tool, that has allowed and facilitated a lot of great infill development over the years. And then our national research and the research that we got through Smart Growth America grant that we were awarded in two thousand sixteen. So we've, we've used all that information, all the information provided by our stakeholder committee and the public to get where we are today. So it's, it's a progression of a zoning code that was originally adopted in nineteen eighty-seven and brings it up to today, to today, to today's standards. And like Dave said, I, we believe this can be transformational along this corridor. So I think other than that, I'll be around for any questions you may have and we have other staff members that are here that have spent a lot of time on this as well.
I'll just add one quick item to clarify and to stress. The proposed text amendment change for TOD is to add a section to the zoning code to, to help facilitate this type of redevelopment or development along this corridor. We are not rezoning anybody's property, it is entirely an opt-in process, they would have to go through a formal rezoning application that proceeds through the normal channel through planning board and city council. So this is just adding a tool to the toolbox, which we hope is highly successful, but if people want to keep their remaining zoning and not make any changes, that is fully their choice. I believe we have several other proponents and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Well, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, thank you and good afternoon. My name is Scott Dobby, I'm the Executive Director of Omaha by Design, six eighteen South Eleventh Street. You should have before you a letter of support that we wrote in advance, I won't repeat that, but I would like to share a few highlights of why we believe so strongly that transit oriented development is such an important step forward for our city. You know, we see a lot of demand on the neighborhoods in the center of our city. And if we are to accommodate, accommodate the growth that is coming to our city, we're going to have to have policies that encourage us to make greater use of this space. This space, the, the land that's already within our city's boundaries. And it's especially true if we want to see growth that is more inclusive, equitable, affordable and sustainable. It's true if we want to see growth that delivers a better return on investment for the, the taxpayers and the city. It's important for growth that supports the health of our neighborhood schools and the vitality of, of local businesses. And this kind of growth unlocks opportunity for individuals with an enhanced transit system that really frees them to pursue that, that next level in their job or their education, without necessarily having to lock them into the burden of, you know, car ownership, which could be on. could be, on average, $9,000 a year. This kind of growth, if, you know, if we want to see that growth that accommodates this change, but also respects historic qualities, I think that's where we are here, because these are very much beloved neighborhoods that are that way, because they were built along people-centered design principles. And this very much tries to codify that as much as it can be. You know, ultimately, this is tailored also to the specific environment of Omaha, and as Eric added, you know, it's set to do this without forcing anyone into it. It gives us flexibility, but it still provides for that departmental and public review process, which is important. And, you know, finally, I think an advantage of it is it also clarifies expectations. It kind of enables that more authentic neighborhood growth, and it, you know, when you see things like ADUs and others, it might enable folks to stay in place, to age in place, to add value to their property, because it kind of lowers the bar, not in quality, but in the accessibility. You don't have to be a professional, you know, real estate expert to be able to understand how to make the most of this. So lastly, I'd just like to add, you know, we watched these guidelines evolve over those two, three years as a member of the stakeholder committee, and we're pleased to do so. I do want to thank the Planning Department for, you know, managing a process that builds on what we've learned from the ACI and from the PUR. You know, they solicited a great deal of feedback, truly, and I'm sure that nobody involved got everything they wanted in the deal. But, you know, everybody participated, everybody gave a little, and the result is, I think, the well-balanced set of guidelines that we have today. So with that, I hope we can apply these, I hope we can learn from these, I hope that over time, we can continue to revise these. And, you know, someday soon, I'd, I hope they're expanded alongside a really robust and successful transit system. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
I'll try and be brief. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Will Green. I'm at 318 South 33rd Street, and I help lead the Omaha Missing Middle Housing Campaign, which is a coalition of organizations and grassroots volunteers advocating for improvements to our zoning code. Coalition includes AARP, Sierra Club, One Omaha, American Institute of Architects, Nebraska, Jocelyn Institute for Sustainable Communities, Platte Institute, Mode Shift Omaha, Nebraska Housing Developers Association, Green Omaha Coalition, Saddle Creek Corridor Neighborhood Association, among others. And we're committed to a more inclusive Omaha, which means housing of all shapes, sizes, and prices closer to jobs, schools, and transit. We do think Omaha has some work to do to achieve this end, and it is still difficult to build anything other than large lot detached suburban-style housing, even in the core of our city, east of 680. So under this TOD plan, even under this TOD plan, building a modest backyard cottage or an ADU, structures that were widely supported during the city's fantastic outreach efforts, would still require a rezoned conditional use permit, and that's assuming you're lucky enough to lie within a TOD sub-district, and you meet the coverage parking and owner occupancy requirements, and you're willing to add a deed restriction to your property. So we do feel, you know, these are, the proposed policies is a step certainly in the right direction, and we urge its passage, but, you know, it's somewhat of a modest step in the right direction. And so while it does have some flaws, we urge its passage today. It does contain excellent guidelines that will focus future development towards a more sustainable model, and we hope it is a first step, and really thank the city for initiating the process and the hard work of the Planning Department. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. My name is Adam Weinberg. I'm the Communications and Outreach Director at the Platte Institute, which is based here in Omaha at 6910 Pacific Street. We'd like to show our support and commend all the thought and work that's gone into the zoning aspects of the TOD plan. As Omaha moves forward with its Affordable Housing Action Plan, transit-oriented development and housing choices like accessory dwelling units can move us in the right direction. Housing, it's a relatively new area for us at the Platte Institute, but we are getting involved because we see housing at the core of many of the issues that concern Nebraskans that are speaking with us, whether we're talking about property taxes, attracting workforce, or helping people become entrepreneurs. The availability and price of housing really impacts so much about how we live and work here in Nebraska, and we can all see with our own eyes here in the city of Omaha that real estate prices are rapidly rising, and Nebraska cities can continue to improve affordability and economic opportunity by removing barriers to how we use land and by becoming more inclusive of housing choices that meet today's needs. Where this all links up with transit-oriented development, in my view, is that if we can provide the regulatory flexibility for more people to find housing near to where they work, then we can build less car-dependent cities, give residents more personal and financial flexibility. And certainly, Orbit is one of the options TOD allows residents to choose, but it could also make rideshare, biking, scooters, even just walking, more of a practical and beneficial option for residents if those options are put within reach of what they need on a daily basis, services and such. In this pandemic, I think we've seen a lot of people shifting toward more remote work, and more people are realizing they could be doing a lot with the money they're putting into car payments, insurance, maintenance, not to mention fuel and taxes, that they're all associated with those costs. So, but I think for more people to make those changes, they'll need housing that's connected to those alternatives and that makes financial sense for homeowners, for renters and property owners. So we would like to thank the Board and Planning Department for their efforts. We'd encourage the adoption of these amendments, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Any other proponents?
Evan Schweitz with Metro Transit, 2222 Coming Street. I'll be brief, because it sounds like there's a lot of support already. We live in a community where most people don't ride transit, and many of you may feel the same way, but at the same time, at Metro, we're hearing from many people that really would like to. And so what we've done is to try to improve the products that we're offering by increasing reliability, frequency, speed, and intuitiveness. So we're excited for Orbit to launch this fall, and it's very timely that these amendments are coming before you at this time as well. As we've engaged with the community over the last few years, we've heard from a lot of people that are interested in living near Dodge Street, and they're encountering obstacles where the market's already tight, as others have mentioned. And so that's creating a barrier that's prohibiting people that could really benefit from transit access. So the best way to address the shortage of supply is to increase the housing stock and provide new options that don't currently exist in the market. So I commend the Planning Department for their work over the last couple of years. I've kind of been alongside as they've done outreach in every neighborhood along the corridor, heard from folks on all ends of the spectrum, and they've come up with a good mix of solutions here today that really addresses the main concerns. So for all these reasons and more, I'm happy on behalf of Metro Transit to extend our support for the approval of these amendments, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak?
My name is Scott Williams, 3820 Jones Street. I'm here today to speak in support of Agenda Items seven and eight, the proposed amendments to the city of Omaha's master plan and the Chapter 55. I'm pleased to stand alongside my friend Will Green, who represents the Omaha Missing Middle Housing Campaign and the diverse coalition with which they work. Grassroots organizing is essential to inclusive governance. With regard to transit-oriented development plans, I support increased density within our neighborhoods. Streets are a platform for transportation, commerce, and connectivity within our communities. By focusing development around land use, which supports transit, that platform can deliver essential safety benefits, including higher volume of people, without resorting to detrimental and dangerous increased speed. The benefits of density are numerous and diverse, putting Omaha streets ahead. In particular, increased density reduces infrastructure construction and maintenance costs for our city. Increased density creates increased property tax base to support and enable our public agencies. Increased density supports our transit ecosystem to expand transportation choices to all members of our community. Beyond density, transit-oriented development plans benefit our community in additional ways. By supporting a mass transit system, those who choose mass transit will help to reduce traffic for those who still choose to use cars. I feel that these changes are a strong step forwards towards a more dynamic and vibrant community for us all. After these steps, more will undoubtedly be needed to continue this progress. I want to acknowledge the efforts of the Planning Department towards community input. With all of the phone, letter, email, and website comments tabulated and posted online, I've had a chance to read through the thoughts of our neighbors across our community. I'm pleased to see the support of such a broad swath of people and neighborhoods. The voice of community residents must ring out loud and clear when new development proposals are considered by the Planning Board and the City Council. Implementation of this plan must not be interpreted to mean the development has a license to ignore the inputs, concerns, or comments from neighbors, existing businesses, and community organizations. Thank you for the steps you take today in approving the proposed amendments to the master plan and to Chapter 55, and for the continued steps and actions that I'm confident that this Board, the Planning Department, our City Council will continue to take in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Sarah Nelson, 4806 Underwood Avenue. I am one of the co-presidents of the Dundee Memorial Park Association. I want to say that I'm very thankful for the Planning Department for meeting with us so often and emailing. Some of those meetings were very tense, but we made it through. And so I'm just very thankful that you all, you know, heard our concerns, you listened to us. We really came together, and we're really happy with how it worked out for the Dundee neighborhood. And we're ready to support, support this transit-oriented development initiative and get people on board to change their zoning to the SFA zoning. So thank you all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Can I see a raise of hands? How many people wish to speak here as a proponent or even an opponent? How many more? Sir, do you want to come on down? You can come on down and sit up front. It'll just help speed the process. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
All right, no problem. Manny, I'm with Spark CDI. I guess I'll give you an address, so 3306 Cass Street. I don't know where to start, really. We gave a letter of support, so you can check that for, like, the longer version, but just in general, this, I think, is an easy decision to make. It's a good set of ordinances for the city that, I think, like a lot of people said, it's a good tool to increase the value and quality of places along, or where this tool is applied. So we're in full support and looking forward to seeing some of these changes being made in North and South Omaha. Thanks.
Thanks, Manny. Any other proponents?
Isaiah Ong, 15510 Arbor Street. I'm a member of the Missing Middle Housing Campaign, along with Mr. Will Green. I just wanted to put my voice of support. First, I'm not a native of Omaha, I'm from Hawaii, and we moved here in 2012, me and my wife. We were expecting our first, and the unit that we could afford was something that looked like an ADU. It was a basement converted unit that was just right across the street from Highland, Robert Dairy, just north of Coming Street, and we were able to get on our feet in a new city, in a new town, you know, with great private homeowner landlords. And I think that's what I'm most excited about, is that accessibility to this type of development, that more people will be able to participate in the multifamily market outside of just the private developers who are doing great things in urban Omaha, but I'd like to see more of that, more of that participation with the private homeowners within urban Omaha. As I'm now a Western Omahont, while I won't be necessarily directly affected by the TOD districts, I do pay my property taxes, I'm a taxpayer, and I do want to see those things that are being implemented in terms of transit, such as Orbit, to succeed. And I think the best way to do that is to build around those transit nodes that are currently being constructed, and I see that as just good tax stewardship in terms of passing this change in Chapter 55. So I appreciate everything that has already been done, has already been said, and I put my full support into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions from the Board before we hear from Eric?
If I might, I would just like to echo comments that Director Vanslo mentioned at the beginning here, and all the public testimony as well to this. I'm really impressed, and I really appreciate the work. I mean, I can tell, we can all tell how much work and effort went into, in developing this, and, you know, really do appreciate the depth of the research that was done and the outreach to the community as well, which I think is very, very important in things like this. The stakeholder group was tremendous, and, you know, I could hear, just in the testimony, the communication that took place. So very important when we're dealing with something like this to get public input. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Planning Department for all the work that you guys went through, and the community for being involved in the process as well, and I think we're going to reap a lot of benefits from this, so that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
So after the Planning Board vote, these will proceed to City Council later this month, and, you know, we'll make sure to update our website of when the public hearing at City Council is. And, you know, we ask all those that supported us here to continue to support us at City Council and get this thing finalized, and hopefully, you know, implement and have some very quality developments that come before this Board in the future. So specifically for Agenda Item number seven, which is the master plan amendment, staff recommends approval.
Before I ask for a motion, I hate to be repetitive, but I'm going to be repetitive after what Dave said and Mike said. Been on the Board for, I don't know, 13 years, I guess, and I've often complimented our Planning Department. They are, I guess the best thing I can say is how professional they are and how unbiased they are for that app. When applicants come in, they treat everybody the same and try to work with everybody. In this case, I'm just more than impressed, after we were reading what's in our packet and then the presentations in the pre-meeting today, I'm just more than impressed with the work that the Planning Department has done, like Dave said, and even the stakeholders' group, the 13 public meetings Derek said, where they even had a period in May and June where public could make comments, and they took those comments and made adjustments to everything. I just, just a great job, so. All right, for Agenda Item number seven, I'll ask for a motion. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Eric, Agenda Item number eight.
Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on. Agenda Item number nine, Case C3-20-161. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha request approval of amendment to Chapter 55 regarding the mixed-use district location, city of Omaha, and the three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And Jed, you're presenting.
Yes, thank you. Jed Molton with the Planning Department. Case number nine is an amendment to the mixed-use zoning ordinance. As you may know, mixed-use zoning code applies mostly to our new commercial zoning districts in the western areas of the city. They're special zoning districts that are developed under special review and a development agreement. Over the years since it was implemented in 2007, we've been monitoring, and we routinely will improve the code to make adjustments for change in market demand, or just to improve outcomes, and try to ask the question if we're achieving the objectives that we originally set out to achieve. So in, about 18 months ago, we convened a stakeholder group of developers, engineers, designers, architects, who work regularly within the mixed-use districts to discuss issues, to see if they had any concerns, and we had a good meeting. issues, to see if they had any concerns, and we had a good meeting and came away with some key points that we think we wanted to follow up and look at. I think the first and important point to note is that it was general consensus that the objective of creating pedestrian-oriented, commercial, mixed-use centers, as we've been attempting to do over the last 20 years, is still a good idea, and we should still continue to work towards that end. How we accomplish that, I think, is being refined, and we're all working creatively to find better ways to do that. So, much of the code amendments that we're proposing are addressing the outcomes of that meeting. There's some editorial clarifications that are included, which we routinely do to take advantage of the opportunity, and there's several substantive changes that I'd like to discuss today. I think one of the notable changes is that the current regulations to foster mixing of uses and kind of this areas that are complementary to each other included a requirement for a minimum amount of office space. In doing so, it defined what that meant as a certain type of office building, I think, during the era when this was created, which was an office building that had a central lobby and multiple floors, common to commercial office districts. So, it's been, it was noted that meeting this requirement has been challenging. There's not that much demand for that type of building anymore. So, two things occurred. We've developed a way to take advantage of the rise in mixed-use and multifamily apartment buildings, and to incorporate those into the districts as an exchange or trade-off to the office requirement. So, we feel multifamily does an equally good job of promoting mixing of uses and activation of these districts. So, we've provided an alternative way to meet the office requirement through exchanging that required area for multifamily, and we felt that was a good exchange. We've also redefined what an office use is, or an office building is, to accommodate some other types of building forms, such as office condominiums, different building types. In the end, we're still trying to maintain and differentiate an office building from a inline strip commercial, so that we're still getting this mixture of uses in there. But we feel this amendment makes for considerable compromise and flexibility in achieving that goal. Another notable change is that we've limited the amount of convenience storage that can be in any one mixed-use district. Convenience storage that I'm referring to is to be differentiated from limited warehousing, which is a multi-story building. Convenience storage is the typical one-story storage facility with all the garage doors that roll up. Quite popular these days for some reason, but they're proliferating through the city. And while they're somewhat benign and they're necessary, to have them occupy a significant portion of a mixed-use district, we believe kind of disrupts the original intent and goal of the mixed-use areas, which is to provide local neighborhood services and activated areas that people in the surrounding neighborhoods could walk to and enjoy. So, we felt it would be an improvement to limit where convenience storage goes and the amount of area that it can take up. So, the proposed change limits the area of any one mixed-use district to 10% for convenient The other notable change that we've included is providing, making, including conditions for multifamily as they are included into mixed-use districts. So, 15 years ago, there wasn't that much of a demand for multifamily. It was occurring that it was not necessarily in the mixed-use districts, but there's been a real rise in popularity of having pedestrian-oriented residential, and one of the ways that it's occurring is in the mixed-use district. So, the original ordinance addressed was dealing with large box retail and big-box retail at the time, and didn't really make any provisions for residential. So, the thought with this change is that if we're going to welcome and include multifamily into mixed-use districts, that we should make sure that it follows the same kind of pedestrian-oriented rules that the commercial development does. So, there's additional language that was added to address the multifamily building type in a mixed-use district. And the last change, and probably most notable, is the change in the requirement for what's currently referred to as a grouping of buildings and a public plaza, as it often is represented. While I think in the day it was a great idea, it was clearly an advancement in how commercial development was to occur, and I believe it was modeled after the lifestyle, commercial retail center model at the time. But over the years, as it's played out, we've recognized that not every mixed-use district can have a central pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use, commercial district with a plaza, specifically not on each quadrant of each major intersection. It turns out that the mixed-use districts evolve along their own thematic lines, so some mixed-use districts will tend to be more office use, some will be more big-box retail with a high percentage of pad sites, some will be traditional mixed-use main streets like Hartwood Preserve or some of the other new districts out there. So, there's quite a different and variety of the thematic outcome of these different districts. So, we've gone away from a prescriptive, one-size-fits-all solution to one that's more of a menu of 14 different pedestrian-oriented items that can be incorporated into the district. So, in some cases, it would be an enhanced sidewalk area, maybe wider area, street trees with pedestrian lighting could be an element that weaves through a mixed-use district. It could be a trail that leads and connects the neighborhood through a naturalized area to another neighborhood or something like that. It could be a simple little pocket park, or it could be a playground that's associated with the new multifamily that's coming into the area. So, we feel like there's considerably more flexibility to provide these pedestrian-oriented amenities in the mixed-use areas with this last change of the grouping of buildings. So, that sums up, I think, the most notable changes to the code. With that, I'd ask for your approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Jed. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions from the Board? Eric?
Yeah, and I'll just add that many members of the stakeholder group that we had met with were pretty excited about some of these changes and some of the options moving forward. We have been working towards some of these same items with many of the major amendments of mixed-use that you see before you on a monthly basis. So, it's not an entirely new concept, but these are good changes. I do want to add that when we do an amendment to Chapter 55 zoning, state law requires that we notify every registered neighborhood association in the City of Omaha. So, with the TOD effort and these other text amendments, there was very extensive outreach to more than 250 neighborhood associations. So, I just wanted to add that, and something that follows up with the TOD and then also these others. For this specific item, staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda Item Number Ten, Case C3-20-162. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha request approval of an amendment to Chapter 55 regarding bicycle parking, R5 through R8 district site development regulations, storm shelters, and landscape performance bonds. Location: City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And Kevin, you are presenting?
I'm gonna actually say a few words before Kevin starts. So, yeah, there's a kind of a mix of items on this one. So, Kevin Carter from our department's gonna start off with the bicycle parking, and then I will briefly mention the other three items.
Thank you. Kevin Carter, City Planning Department, 1819 Farnham Street. So, the proposed amendments that are specific to Article 14, Off-Street Parking and Loading, establish minimum bicycle parking requirements for our mixed-use districts and for the new transit-oriented development districts. And we have proposed requiring bike parking in those districts because those are really intended to be pedestrian-oriented districts, where providing secure and convenient bicycle parking will be most impactful in encouraging biking as a mode of transportation, which is something that our master plan kind of encourages. To develop these requirements, we researched a lot of other cities. We looked at the zoning codes in 15 comparison cities that were kind of mostly in the same region as Omaha or similar in characteristics. And we also looked at the actual use of bike parking in some Omaha developments to try to set requirements that are realistic and appropriate. And in addition to the new bike parking requirements, the amendments also include some changes to the bonus provision section of our off-street parking article, and that section provides for reductions to off-street vehicle parking requirements in exchange for the provision of facilities that encourage some alternative forms of transportation, including biking and public transit. I guess that's all I have for today, but if you have questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
For the other three items, for the R5 through R8 district site development regulations, as the cost of development continues to increase nationwide, the Planning Department has had multiple conversations with the development community over the past couple of years on potential tools that can be utilized to ensure that the City of Omaha continues to grow in an economical yet quality and effective manner. In an attempt to address one of those items, we're proposing to modify the site development regulations for minimum lot width from 50, the existing 50 feet to 40 feet for the R5 and R6 districts, along with a minimum lot area of 5,000 to 4,000 square foot. This would apply to single-family homes. It allows a little bit more density. Now, it should be worth noting that the overall site area per unit density allowed in R5 and R6 would not be increased. There is already a provision in place that allows a smaller size townhome, or a single-family attached, or duplex to be included, so this is specifically for single-family residential detached structures. Those size requirements are already in place in the R7 and R8 district. This would open it up for R5 and R6. Along with that decrease, that small decrease in size, we are proposing to increase the building in impervious coverage in both those districts by 5%. The last change for this portion of the code amendment would be to reduce the front yard setback from 35 feet to 25 feet for low-density housing styles such as single-family, duplex, and townhomes within the R6, R7, and R8 districts. The 25-foot front setback is already in place in the R4 and R5 districts. It makes sense to have that consistent across the board at R6, R7, and R8. The third portion of this code amendment is dealing with landscape performance bonds, small section in our code that allows for an applicant to take out a landscape bond in lieu of providing the landscape plantings. Now, this is intended for the winter cold months, and, you know, before they can open the building, if you can't actually put in the landscaping, you would take out a landscape bond with the city to ensure that those plantings are covered and, you know, allowed, and there's a financial guarantee. However, there was no specific timeframe in the existing zoning code, so this change would specify that timeframe that that would be allowed from November 15th through April 15th unless approved by the planning director. The final component of this text amendment deals with storm shelters. In 2018, City Council approved changes to the building code of the municipal code. That building code accounts for storm shelter requirements, so in order to prevent unnecessary, confusing, differing regulations regarding storm shelters, this provision is basically being taken out of the zoning code with the small statement that storm shelters are governed based on Chapter 43 of the municipal code. So, those are the four different items with this text amendment. Staff recommends approval. Of course, you have the public hearing as well.
Do we have any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Staff recommends approval, sorry.
Comments or questions from the Board? You want to say it again? Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C3-20-163. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha request approval of amendment to the Chapter 55 regarding Article 22 Urban Design. Location: City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And Jed, you're up again.
Thank you. Jed Moulton, Planning Department. Item Number Eleven represents text amendments to Article 22, which includes our urban design zoning. The majority of the changes are to address editorial changes and updates. We did a lot of rearranging of parts to make it clearer, removed redundancies from other sections of the code, and just further refined it. We've also included numerous cross-references to the recently supported TOD zoning and the changes to the mixed-use zoning that I just discussed previously. So, mostly editorial, with one exception, there is a provision in our urban design code specific to parking lots that they have rather significant landscaping at the perimeter when adjacent to these urban design streets. That's designated as 15 feet, which in dense urban environments can be rather challenging to meet specifically downtown or more compact infill areas. So, we have included alternative ways to reduce that in exchange for other screening-type separation features. This change here takes it a step further, allows more flexibility, and it allows it to be applied to any urban design area rather than specifically downtown or ACI-1 and ACI-2 districts. So, again, it adds more flexibility. I think it furthers an already successful means of reducing that landscaping, and would ask for your approval. Thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the Board?
Staff recommends approval.
Before we...
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment in general. I've had the pleasure of, I guess it's not always a pleasure, but the experience of working in building buildings in 12 different states and scores of different jurisdictions of codes and zoning and stuff like that. And I've got to say that not all places are pleasant, and a lot of codes are being administered as a limiting factor to growth and positive development for communities, but I don't find that here in Omaha. I've had the pleasure of being on this Board for, I don't know how many years now, and not 13. But the one thing I just, what you've seen in these last five cases is something that is extremely positive for the City of Omaha. It's very forward-looking and also looking backwards to see how things have gone with what we've done in the past, and maybe what we could do better, and then also being responsive to the community and what the community wants to see. And so many times, we've seen an applicant come before us with a case that seems very logical, but for whatever reason, the code or the regulations or whatever seem to be an impediment to that development. And what you see here is just a concerted effort by the Planning Department to be able to rectify that, so that earnest development that meets good public needs can be, can go forward without the detriment of other people. So, I think it's a very, very commendable job that everybody's done, and I thank you all, again, as others have, for the effort that you put forth on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. That was nice, and you wrapped it up, and do a nice package there. Good job. I'll recommend approval then. We have a motion for approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
Lisa, we have a motion and a second. Will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Agenda item number twelve, case C three dash twenty dash one sixty-four. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the disposal of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: nine five nine, nine six three, nine six seven, nine seven one, North Twenty-eighth Avenue, and Autumn, you are presenting.
Yes, thank you. I didn't know if we'd ever make it there.
Say what?
I didn't know if I'd ever make it here. All right. How do I turn on this? So here is an image of the four parcels of property, city-owned. These are also four lots, zoned R seven, approximately twenty-five, well, it's twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine square feet. City Planning received an inquiry from a neighbor wanting to build two single-family homes and one community garden on these parcels. Here to answer any questions, and City Planning, City staff recommends approval of this transfer of properties.
Hello. I'm going to take this down so you can see my face.
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you. My name is Eric Nicholson. I live at nine five five, North Twenty-eighth Avenue. I, it's approached Autumn, interested in acquiring those properties because I ran into an issue with that neighborhood, that there's little accessible, homes with accessibility. I've worked with individuals with disabilities for sixteen years, as well as my parents are coming into a period of their life where they need accessible, accessibility. They are going to be moving here from Missouri. I live, again, at nine five five. My sister lives in Lincoln. My father is Parkinson's, and they're in their upper sixties. Looking for a place where they could have everything at a ranch level and be close enough to me in case they needed anything became kind of difficult. So again, I approached the city about acquiring this property. We already have a really nice garden there, but it doesn't take the entirety of the property, mostly just nine five nine right next door to my house. And there are a couple of neighbors who work it fairly regularly, and so I was interested in maintaining that space as much as possible. The second dwelling, which would be closer to the end of the block, would be for meeting purposes with the newly-found Highlander Association because it had deformed and then is now coming back together. And then also just overseeing the community garden for everyone to be able to enjoy, including individuals and disability services that I work with, as well as foster children that I work with. But yes, I am really looking forward to this project, if you are as well, and if there are no other opponents to me acquiring those lands. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board?
Eric? I just want to add, if this transfer of property is finalized and successful in the future months, just to have the applicant continue to coordinate with staff on any replating of lots to allow for the building of the structure. So we are here to, to help and answer any questions. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number thirteen, case C three dash twenty dash one thirty-six. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the thirty-nine Harney Street TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: thirty-nine twenty-two, thirty-nine twenty-four, thirty-nine twenty-six, Harney Street. And Bridget, you're presenting.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. For you is a TIF project at the northeast corner of Thirty-Ninth and Harney Street, or the northeast corner of Fortyth and Harney. So the blue-shaded areas represent the lots that the developer proposes to demolish the existing sites. This is a house that's been vacant, as well as a detached garage. This little checkmark is a, indicates that there are code violations on it. So the developer proposes to demolish, clear the site, and construct a restaurant and event space in, in that place. And here is a rendering of the proposed finished product. So as you see, there will be some outdoor space, rooftop space, as well as outdoor space here. And then this structure, adjoining structure, represents the event space. The developer is in this particular market in terms of owning a restaurant and being very familiar with owning and managing and operating a restaurant. They own a bar, bar-type restaurant in the Benson area. They are also constructing a similar type venue in the Benson area, so they would like to just bring this type of venue to the Blackstone area. There are some basic public improvements that will be made, such as streetscaping, landscaping, and some of it is visible here in this, this rendering. The, if I go back here just to make it known, this is a, these two properties are already zoned NBD, ACI-one. This particular property has to be rezoned, and the developer will be applying for rezoning for that particular property, so that'll be coming back to you, I believe, in the near future. The amount of the TIF is a little over six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, which represents about a little over seventeen percent of the funding for this particular project, and the amount of the investment is a little over three point nine million. I think the attorney representing the project is here. If I can answer any other questions, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, Bridget.
Bridget? Bridget, would you, it came up at the pre-meeting, would you want to talk about, a little bit about the parking issue?
Yes.
I think that's an important element to all of this.
And, and I know Michael Sands, the attorney representing the developer, can probably give more details than I can. But when we first had, took the application and had the pre-op, we made them know that, you know, there are going to be questions about the parking, and they said they have made arrangements. So there are arrangements for parking for this particular project, however, because it is NBD zoning, they know that, we know that it's not required, but we know that in that area there is a parking issue, so they have made arrangements. And beyond that, I think I will defer to Michael Sands to maybe give any more details.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. Michael Sands, seventeen hundred Farnham Street, on behalf of Jap Ventures LLC, who's the developer. As Bridget discussed, the proposed project is a mixed-use development consisting of an open-air concept, restaurant, bar, and an event space. Construction is hopefully expected to begin upon TIF approval, and, and they hope to be up and running by summer of next year, twenty twenty-one. The project site is, is in a vacant, dilapidated, and, and dangerous condition despite occupying that prominent space in the, the district. The developer stands ready to invest that almost four million to completely transform that corner, which should benefit the area and the residents around there. With respect to conformity of the master plan, the city desires these types of mixed-use elements within the area, and it incorporates a high degree of urban design. It has gone through site plan review and has incorporated all of the city's comments with respect to that. It'll create a number of new jobs and, and does incorporate those public improvements that Bridget spoke about that'll improve the aesthetic of the area beyond just the boundary of the lot. So with that, we appreciate your consideration. I will, I'll go ahead and, and get into the parking issue because I assume that that, that will be a question. So as Bridget said, there, it is NBD, so there's not, there does not need to be onsite parking. However, having a business model that involves events, their business partner with respect to the event space is Abraham Catering. Abraham Catering does the same thing at, at the Pella and has formed relationships with surrounding parking lots, whether it's UNMC, whether it'll be the Pella, if they're, if they're not going to be utilizing their space or otherwise, that, that they will be able to park the amounts of people that they need to because they know that the street parking will not accommodate that use. So that is the, that is the arrangement for parking.
So can I, yeah, thank you for that. I'll follow up just a little bit. So is this going to be open at all times during the day and into the evening then? Or is this an event center that's only going to be open periodically?
No, so the weekend. So if you kind of see, if you see this area with the kind of open-air garage doors and with the rooftop on, on top, that, that'll be the restaurant area, and then this, this large, which will be open always to the public, and then the, the larger building to the side of that, that's the event space.
Okay. And what's the capacity?
Up to two hundred.
With between restaurant and event space?
For the event space only. The capacity for the restaurant, I'm not sure has, has been determined, but it'll certainly comply with city code.
Okay. Yeah, parking's always an issue in that area.
You could easily have over a hundred cars for an event there and the restaurant, and that's going to be difficult to find that much parking, isn't it?
Certainly. I mean, it, it is a part of their business model. They, they went through this in Benson with the event space that, that some of the developer group is building there, and, and, and they vetted options over there. They will do the, the same, same here. Like I said, with Abraham Catering, their existing agreements, that's what they're banking on at the moment, but this business model won't work unless they have parking. It just won't. So they're, they are vetting all the options. Right now, the, their best option is, is using their relationship with Abraham Catering and Pella to, to accommodate that.
And what's the proximity between those two businesses and this business?
Right across the street.
Across the street.
And UNMC, I believe the other parking that is available through Abraham Catering's Business Ventures is UNMC, which is a couple blocks away.
So there are other businesses, do other businesses utilize their parking, do you know?
That I, I don't know.
Just curious how you're going to monitor to make sure that, you know, that you have an event.
That, that part of the operational side, I think, will be handled by Abraham Catering.
Well, okay.
It's the plan at this, this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing? Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're going to take agenda items number fourteen and twenty-four together. Case, and agenda item number fourteen is case C three dash twenty dash one sixty-six. Applicant, Stan Houston Equipment, request approval of amendment to the future land-use element of the city's master plan from office commercial to industrial. Location: forty-two forty South Fiftieth Street. And agenda item number twenty-four, case C ten dash twenty dash one eighty-two. Applicant, Stan Houston Equipment, request rezoning from CC to GI. Location: forty-two forty South Fiftieth Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon. Wayne Wagner with Stan Houston Equipment, also representing Shaladay Holdings, which is the owner of the property. Joseph Bosade is the sole owner of Stan Houston and, and Shaladay. We're excited to be in Omaha. We're based out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. It's a construction, sales, and equipment and rental company that's been around for over sixty years. Most, in the last, say, twelve to fifteen years, we've seen growth throughout South Dakota, down to Sioux City, Iowa, and now we see a, a great opportunity down here in, in Omaha. We purchased the property with the intention of emulating the redevelopment of what we did up in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, last year. We purchased a former Kmart site there, which we redeveloped into a seventy-two thousand square foot showroom. We have shops for working on equipment and things like that inside. When we, we bought the property, we understood that we were kind of on the edge of being a little bit more intense of a use for a commercial classification or zoning. Where in Sioux Falls, we were considered kind of just on the, on the edge as well, but we were considered commercial. Here, based on the advice of planning staff, which we've worked with several times over the last six to eight months, they indicated that for us to, to do what we fully wanted to, with the site, we needed to move to an industrial zoning. We would be probably what you'd consider the most, the least intense use on the industrial side. We're, we're really not manufacturing anything. It's, it would be more what you'd see in a big-box store, parking. The owner has plans to, you know, fully redevelop the site. The site's been there. It's, it's been in a declining state for many years. A good example, the Douglas County Treasurer has an office there. We had a code complaint in regards to a, a pothole in their drive-through, and rather than just, you know, put some mixed material in there and patch it up, the owner had us go in there and completely pull it out and put new concrete in there. So we're not just kind of coming in to put a, a coat of paint on it. We really see it as a, a spot where we can grow into. We opened business towards late June in more of what we'll call a hardware store format, where, where we worked really closely with the planning staff to make sure that we were operating within the, the abilities with the current zoning. There's things that we, we need to move into to fully utilize the site. Our plans are within the next five years is to, rather than using the former grocery store space as a warehouse, to shift into where that would be our, our main focus, where we'll have a showroom and, and do a full line of offerings on both woodworking, construction supplies, and stuff, so. But there, there have been some questions in regards to potential reuse after we were, we would own the property, and I can say with quite confidence, based on the owner, that, you know, he's in it for the long run on this property. We're, we're, we're here to stay, and we're looking to really utilize it in the best manner possible, and, and we want to be a good neighbor as well, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Wayne, we've, we've gotten some correspondence from neighbors
Yep.
that are opposed to this. What have, what's been your contact with the neighbors, your discussions? You're looking for a rezoning, looking for a change in land-use element of the master plan? What's been your contact and discussions?
We've heard from one, one of the, actually, the former owner of the property, that we purchased it from, Mr. Lerner. He had, said he had been in contact with several of the other neighbors, and their concern seemed to be more on the long, of the long-range ramifications of the change versus what Stan Houston. The way they understood we were going to use the property, there didn't seem to be any concerns. They were just more worried about potential changes that could happen down the road if, if we sold the property and it had an industrial zoning, which could be used more intensively. So that's really what our understanding of the, the objections to the, the change.
Since you've owned the, the property, you haven't gone out and, and called a meeting, tried to get the, the landowners around your property owners around you together in a public meeting?
We're, we're new to town, and we're, we're getting to know the neighbors, but we have not had any type of a public meeting of such. We've just had answered questions and been in contact with people that approached us as far as having questions about the development.
As you could see through the transit-oriented development, the city, the meetings they had, you know, it's with the general public and everything, getting input, it's important to us that, that, I know you're new to the city, but that's, we, we place high value on that, getting public input.
Absolutely, and I, I think we'd be very open to that. The conversations we have, when we purchased the property, there were covenants and there are easements on the property that were legally binding to us as we, as, as we purchased the property. We'd be willing to look, and if there were specific concerns that the neighbors had of entering into other legally restrictive covenants, which we could bind with the property, and that even if we did sell it at some point... and that even if we did sell it at some point down the road, even though it changed zoning, it would still conform to what the neighbors felt would work well with them. So we're open to do that. We'd like to reach out to the neighbors and work on those type of things. We think it's a matter of some small details rather than some major issues that are out there.
Just, yeah, ahead of Mike.
If I might just follow up with that. So as Chairman Rosenbaum mentioned, neighborhood input's important to us, and you can tell that. They're going to be directly impacted by the zoning change
Yep.
to this. And it could impact their business, and it probably will impact their business. That's why I think it's, we all think it's probably pretty important that you have a conversation with them. And if there's an accommodation that can be made, and I really appreciate your willingness to try and work with them, to try and find out what can be done, and I know they would welcome any kind of conversation with you, because the last thing you want to do is impact their businesses by what you're trying to do.
Absolutely.
And it sounds like you've got great plans, but it also sounds like you're going to put pretty heavy equipment maybe on the site as well? Is that true?
We rent and sell heavy equipment. And when I say heavy equipment, you're not talking big earth movers and things like that. It's skid loaders, it's scissor lifts, telehandlers, things like that. So we're kind of on the middle end of that construction rental. We're not getting up into the really big stuff. But right now, we do have a few things that we have available in the store, but it's kind of that, skid loaders, trailers, those types of things. We cater to both the small contractor and the large contractor. A lot of the large contractors will do long-term rentals where that equipment doesn't even sit on our site ever. It'll come in brand new, they'll rent it from us for six months to a year, and then it'll be moved off, serviced and go on to somebody else. So a lot of those things will just actually pass through. Your smaller guys will need it for a project for one or two days or a week or such, and those kind of come in and out.
Yeah, I think the biggest concern, Lisa, from what I've heard from your neighbors is the designation of industrial, general industrial. So if we can find an accommodation somehow, maybe Eric can talk about this a little bit, an accommodation that would ease their fears, I think that they would probably be more receptive to something like that than to have the whole development be considered general industrial.
Right. And we initially thought that, in Sioux Falls, we had the option of doing a special use permit, but our understanding and based on the advice of the planning staff is that's not an option here in the community commercial zoning that we currently have.
I asked that question too.
Yeah. So if there was an in-between thing that we could do, which wouldn't take everything to a pure industrial, we open to that. And again, if there are specific things, even though it would allow us to, we have no intention of storing construction materials out in an unscreened area. We're basically looking at the, it would be the west side, which would be the rear of the building for any storage of materials that are for sale. Right now, we still have that 72,000 square foot open grocery store building, which we've got permits into now to build ramps to be able to store things inside. Those are things I think we're doing that we probably wouldn't have to, but we feel it's a better use of the property and it's better for our neighbors, I guess, too. We really want the place to look good. We feel it'll be an improvement. The site is in pretty tough shape. It has not had any TLC for a lot of years. Within the next month, we'll be putting a whole new roof on the grocery store building. We're planning to resurface the parking lots. The heating and cooling out of the grocery store building was stripped out of all the copper and everything a couple of years ago. So there's a lot of money and work that needs to be done, and we're getting started on that. So we really want to invest into the property. So it's important to the owner that we fit well with the neighborhood. So we want to do that.
And I appreciate, excuse me, I just appreciate your willingness to do all that. And I think it's going to be important that you have that dialogue with. And so what I'm going to recommend is that we maybe have a chance for you to have that discussion and lay this over, so you have that chance to discuss this with your neighbors, what your plans are. I think there's common ground with this.
Absolutely.
I really do. It sounds like there is. And I think they'd be very receptive to that, but would you be willing to do that?
What I'd like to do is, there's a multi-step process here. We have a meeting this month. If we pass on, we go to another one in another month, and then potentially down to the third for final. We'd like to use the next 30 days to do that, but we would rather than lay it over and still stay at stage one, move on to position ourselves for stage two. But with the agreement is if we haven't gotten to anywhere within the next 30 days, then we would either resend or we would request a layover until we did come to an agreement with the neighbors. That's kind of what we'd like to do.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Dave, do you want to add something?
Well, I guess you kind of answered my question, was there a time limit? Because, you know, we can't really do a conditional approval, you know? We either approve or don't.
Sure.
And so, you know, as Mike said, talking to your neighbors proactively, you know, not waiting for them to call you, but calling them, making sure that everybody's on the same page, and then also investigating any other options that you might have that will fit everybody. It could be done in that 30-day period, then you could be back to us with, you know, with the flying colors, so to speak, and no objections at all. And so that's, I guess, what Mike is asking. Would that be viable for you to do?
What would be the timeline then? I mean, we would, I'm guessing there would not be a December? I mean, if this moved over to October for the first step?
Eric, can I answer that for you?
Well, if we were, if there was a layover one month and this was back before the planning board on October, if it is just a rezoning, which at this time is just a major, the land use amendment and a rezoning, so, you know, there aren't usually many items that have to be addressed between planning board and city council, and we can do our best to expedite the documents as quickly as possible. Now, we do have to obtain some signatures from different departments, but, you know, I could foresee you could be in front of the city council mid to late November, even with the one-month layover.
That'd be fine. We're just not sure what the schedule into the end of the year is. I know the COVID situation is impacting open meetings. We don't want to get into a situation where we're moving into early to late spring to go which direction we're going. So if this would just, the November timeframe is what we really had in mind anyways. So if you feel that a layover until next month wouldn't push things into, you know, too far down the line, it would still be something that could be done in November, then based on agreeable agreements between all parties, I guess.
Wayne, we haven't missed a meeting yet, so.
Okay.
So you should be okay with that?
That's good. That's good.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Come forward, sir. Give me your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Can I take this off?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Jay Lerner. Oddly enough, I'm the owner of the Lerner Company and 10855 West Dodge Road, Omaha, Nebraska. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you this afternoon. Wayne made a nice presentation. I wouldn't know Wayne until he just came up here and announced himself. But let me give you a little background and just, I'll do as fast as I can. I used to do this, just do it, but now I got to read it because I can't do it anymore. As you may or may not know, for the past 35 years, we have been involved in the commercial real estate business, specializing in shopping centers and retail developments. I am quite uncomfortable, to be honest with you, being in front of this board today for many reasons. But for years, many, many years, working with the planning department and planning directors, going back to Marty Schuchert, Bob Peters, Steve Jensen, and now Dave, I've always been in front of the board asking for something, asking for an approval. This is the very first time that I've ever been in front of any board or committee asking for the denial of something. That's not what I do. That's not what I've done. So as a little history, we developed Spring Valley Shopping Center in 1991. It started out with a Baker's supermarket and an Osco Drugstore. And obviously, those were the anchor tenants, and needless to say, over time, things have changed. And both of these buildings have become vacant. Baker's was bought by Nash Finch. They had a store on 50th and Grover, and they decided to close this store and keep the store at 50th and Grover. I think they owned the shopping center, that's why. Not sure. So then, Osco turned into an Ace Hardware. Ace Hardware closed about six months ago after the Baker's supermarket was gone. So after many months of negotiations, the property with Stan Houston Company, originally we vetted, originally we wanted to keep the small shops and keep the retail. There's 22,000 feet of small shops in addition to the large buildings, and we wanted to keep those shops. That didn't work out because I think that Stan Houston Company wanted the income from those shops to make their numbers work better, and that makes sense. See if I can use this slide thing. We vetted Stan Houston at first before the sale, and it looked like they were a company that did the sale, rental and service of various lines. And that's from their website, the product lines being power tools, hand tools, concrete equipment, safety equipment and woodworking equipment. And we asked, those uses are allowed under the current CC zoning. Not some of the others that are more industrial in nature. So obviously, the buyer was okay with the current zoning status, or they would have never closed on the property. I mean, if you needed to do something else, then what it's zoned for, why wouldn't you put that in as a contingency on the property that we need this zoning before we close? If we would have known upfront that they were going to go for general industrial zoning, we never would have sold it to them. Now, here is what's kind of confusing and annoying. We did not learn about the zoning change quest until two weeks ago. That was when we got a notice of the zoning change from the city. Stan Houston Company never contacted us to try and work together to find a solution for what they needed to do. And as late as yesterday afternoon, we tried to contact them and ask for a layover so that we could try and work things out. And they did not agree to that.
Were you able to connect?
We did connect.
Okay.
Yes, we did connect. And we wanted them to, we asked them to send a letter to the board to ask for a layover, which they did not do. Consequently, I'm here today to strongly oppose the zoning change and amendment to Okay, this comes from the, this comes from the city's future land use map. And this is the exhibit that I enlarged off of the larger land use map. And on this, you will note that this is 50th Street, this is L Street, this is F Street. And you will note that everything from 50th and L Street, west for a half a mile, and everything fronting on 50th Street, from L Street to F Street, is in the future land use plan as office/commercial. would go, and this is in the information that the planning board passed out to everybody. The zoning change, again, I guess maybe I should do it this way. Here's 50th Street. The zoning change would go from this, which is red, to this. So the future land use plan would now be changed, is what they're asking to do, is change it to have office/commercial to the south, office/commercial to the north, and their general industrial This would be the only industrial piece that fronts on 50th Street in the future land use plan from L Street. And this doesn't make sense. When we zoned this piece to CC in 1991, the city was delighted because it was an upgrade in zoning from industrial to CC. Now, we're asking for a downgrade in zoning from CC to general industrial. I understand that the surrounding areas around it is industrial, but the frontage on 50th Street is not industrial, it's CC in the future land use plan. I guess I would kind of wrap up by saying, Stan Houston purchased this property knowing what the zoning was and what uses were allowed. If that was not going to work for them, then why didn't they have a zoning contingency in the purchase plan? They obviously were going to purchase this, and if they didn't get what they wanted, they still owned the property as opposed to not have bought it yet. I believe one of the reasons for that basically is because if they would have wanted a contingency in the agreement to rezone it to general industrial, we never would have sold them the land. Because we would not have wanted a general industrial use on that property.
Jake, can I ask you a question on that?
Yep.
So that has, that property has been in disrepair for quite some time?
Yes.
In its current zoning. Why do you think that is, for one thing? And why can't we find more retail or commercial? What is it about that area that does not work well for commercial retail? What it was originally?
Right. Actually, originally, when I did the deal, I thought we were going to get Kmart moved off the corner, and they never got moved off the corner. So it is not what you would consider an A location because it's not on the intersection of 50th and L. The building is in disrepair, not visually. It's not, it's not a detraction from the neighborhood visually, but it did need a new roof and the air conditioning and some of that stuff. But until we had somebody ready to go, we just left that being until we knew what was going to happen with the property. So we actually have, or had, or still have actually, a gym, a large gym user that was looking. They were also looking at a piece of property. They were also looking at a piece of property on 144th and Center Street and wanted to do that one first before they did this as kind of a secondary location. And that all got put on hiatus based on what's going on today. But that was a possibility that we were going to do it. We met with them two or three times. Stan Houston Equipment, we talked to for months, and then they went away, I think. I don't know what happened. I think they had, maybe found something else that didn't work out. And then they came back to us, and they were ready to do something, okay, let's do it. And so that's why we signed this thing, again, for the existing zoning, not a different zoning. So I guess, I guess I'll conclude by saying, let me show you, oh, let me show you one other thing. I'm trying to find the right page. There it is. Okay, this is one more photo. Okay, so here's, here's the property. I can't blow it up, but here's the property where we are today. This is 50th Street, this is F Street.
I'm going to give it a turn, and that'll line you up with how you were on your other exhibits. Just give it a turn. Yeah, there you go.
Is that it? Okay. Okay, got it. So this is 50th Street, right here.
You're going to have to, we can't see where you're drawing, you have to move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move here, slide it. There you go, right there.
Okay, sorry. All right, sorry.
You're right.
This is 50th Street. So this is who the neighbors are. So here's the buildings that they bought. Here's the strip center that they also bought as well. Adjacent, so they bought like this piece right like this. Adjacent, Arby's. First National Bank. Children's Physicians Clinic. This is a, this is a church here. This is Omni Inventive Care. It's an organization that provides services to significant impaired children, adolescents, and adults. They're right here, and this is a focus school for OPS. So that's what is the neighbors here. And I think you know that three or four of them have sent objections to the planning board for the change in zoning. Now, one final thing. Wayne talked about their facility in Sioux Falls. Here it is. There is no way that we can allow this to be next to a physician's clinic, a bank, Arby's, and the church, and the other, it's just not right. And so, again, they own the property, they can do whatever they want under current zoning. I would be willing, which I told them, to discuss with them. Again, I didn't know anything about this till two weeks ago. I would be willing to discuss with them if they want some outside equipment. Is there an area that we can work out that that'll work? Either on the south side of the property, or on the side of the building, or behind it. But what we're doing by granting GI is they can do whatever they want. But incidentally, they have space in this building they're going to lease to other potential users, which would be industrial users as well. So I guess, I'm just telling you, my bottom line is that it's just to downgrade this zoning on a piece of property that they bought, knowing what the zoning was and knowing what impact it has on all the other neighbors, it doesn't make sense. And consequently, I strongly urge you to oppose the zoning change and the amendment to the city's master plan.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Sorry for being so convoluted. Not, in the old days, I was a lot better.
Are there any other opponents that wish to speak?
Thank you for letting me be here. Andy DiAgosto, Arby's. Panty Inc., Vice President, he, we own the Arby's he was just referring to.
Did you give your address, please, Andy?
Our home office is 13911 Gold Circle.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a whole lot more to say. I think Jay summed it up, and a heck of a lot more. I just wanted to be recognized that I did show up, basically, is the bottom line. So I don't want to take any more time on it.
We got it.
But, thank you.
All right, thanks, Andy. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Wayne, did you want to come forward?
Point of clarification, I guess.
Yep.
I did talk to Mr.
Give your name and address.
Wayne Wagner, 42 South 50th Street in Omaha is our address with Stan Houston. We did meet with planning staff prior to the closing on the property. We did understand what was allowed as is, and we asked them, and they helped kind of coach us through what a process would be moving towards what we intended to use for it. So I agree with Mr. Lerner. We did know what the zoning was before we bought the property, but we did kind of look at what a plan would be towards moving towards what we wanted. Also, upon communication this, on Monday, it was the first I heard that there were any oppositions that had been filed with the board. And then the communication yesterday was in regard to a guarantee that was, Mr. Meyer had indicated they had had from planning staff that there could be a special use permit on the property, and we knew that based on past communications that wasn't possible. So the reason we didn't layover yesterday was based on, we were being asked to lay it over based on something we knew that it wasn't a possibility. So again, we're very open to working with the neighbors, and we'd like to do that, so.
Just asking. Jay presented a, an exhibit that showed Stan Houston rentals and power tools and that sort of thing. Is that how you presented yourself?
We do it differently based on the location. We have smaller locations that might have 10% of that equipment being displayed. In Sioux Falls, like I said, we redeveloped a Kmart site with almost 400 parking spots. So we, a lot of the equipment that's there is in, we're recirculating new equipment for old equipment. So we're in the process of doing that right now. So we probably have three times as much equipment there now than we normally do. A lot of that is just being, is waiting to be redistributed to other locations. So there would be some, but it would not be anywhere close to what's being shown there.
Thank you, Wayne. Any other comments or questions from the board? Eric?
So yes, we do have a unique land use pattern on the future land use map. They're back in the early 90s when, as Jay had mentioned, when the redeveloped, or yeah, redeveloped the site, I guess, or developed the site with the new Baker's Grocery Store. You know, extending that office/commercial. I understand that was to accommodate the development, and probably made sense at the time. As we sit here, 2020, we have received multiple inquiries about industrial for this site. You know, there is the existing industrial zoning to the east, to the west, and to the south, even though the future land use map on the south that show office/commercial, it is industrially zoned. So you do kind of have this island of commercial zoning surrounded by the general industrial zoning all the way around. You know, we are recommending approval of the amendment to the land use plan and the rezoning. We've talked further with Director Fanslow, some of my management staff, just what all options are available. Just trying to look at every scenario. There is one potential middle ground. Now, I don't know if it's, if everybody is on board with it. But taking a step back, maybe if there is a layover, we might recommend a modification in our official recommendation. Rather than going to industrial zoning, there is general commercial zoning that does allow this use type of equipment rental and sales. So the master plan would not need to be amended from the office/commercial designation because GC would fit in with that existing red color, basically, on the map. Now, it would still be a permitted use. And typically, you need industrial zoning for outdoor storage of materials or equipment, that type of thing. But there are a few uses in the zoning code in Section 55-770, and equipment rental and sales is one of those uses that the outdoor storage component is considered accessory and allowed. So if this were to be rezoned to GC, it would be a permitted use. You would still have the outdoor storage component that is allowed. With these procedures, we're not reviewing a specific site plan at the rezoning stage. We can't lock down a site plan, we can't condition it. Now, the rezoning to GC could take away some of the more intensive, scarier uses, I would say, of the GI zoning. So that could be a benefit. But if the desire is to not have the outdoor storage at all, I mean, that issue is still up in the air. So that is one potential path forward that we discuss with staff. You know, it probably seems appropriate that a layover would be the best choice at this time. As I said, you know, we can, if it does come forward and there is agreement or the planning board recommends approval, I mean, we do have the ability to move it fairly quickly to city council. Now, there are, once we hit November and December, there are a lot of holidays, and sometimes that affects the city council schedule, so we'd have to look at that. But just wanted to point that out as a potential option that might not be as impactful to the surrounding property owners, but it would still technically allow the use and the storage. Now, if there are private covenants that talk about outdoor storage or limitations on that, that's a separate matter that the city is not a party to. My understanding, there might be some of those covenants out there right now, and, you know, maybe there was discussions that those could be modified. So that is a separate matter, though, outside of our purview. So I don't know if you have any questions. We still have the official recommendation of approval of both of these cases on the record, but staff is definitely not opposed to a layover to allow further conversations.
All right. I'd close the public hearing, but Patrick can call you up if he.
I just want to say.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jay Lerner, 10855 West Dodge Road, the Lerner Company. I just want to say that we aren't totally opposed to some outdoor storage. And we, that's what I was hoping we would talk about that so that we could figure out where to do it and how much to do it. Can't be that, for sure. But there, we understand, and if we can come to an agreement on a designated area on a certain portion of the site, that would work, then I think that would satisfy him, it would satisfy us. The problem with just GI zoning is not good because you don't know what happens going forward, and anything could happen going forward. So that's why we oppose that.
Thank you, Jay. All right, for agenda item number 14, do we have a motion?
Yeah, given what we've heard today, I think it's very important the parties get together. I'm going to make a recommendation, lay this over.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, do layover.
Do we have a motion on agenda item number 24? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, layover.
Moving on, agenda item number 16. It was on for layover, it was pulled off. It is case C10-20-169, C12-20-170. Applicant Nolan Austin. It is, request is preliminary plat approval of Silver Valley, a subdivision inside city limits with waiver to Section 5382 street grading, along with rezoning from R2 to DR and R4. Location northeast of 72nd Street and Silver Valley Road. Are you Nolan?
Yes, I am. I'm Nolan Austin. 870, sorry, Nolan Austin, I'm with the Warrior Group. My address is 874 South 169th Street here in Omaha. Thank you, Board and Count John Chambers, to be here today, appreciate your time. At this time, we're looking for a motion for layover. We've had one community meeting on July 23rd after sending out a official notice to the residents in the area. We've actually sent out a certified letter requesting a meeting with the residents. We hosted that meeting on July 23rd, and we got some mixed feedback from that. And so, and we had planned to have a follow-up meeting. We've also, unfortunately, we had my business partner, Kevin Irish, was diagnosed with prostate cancer and unfortunately delayed, undelayed some of our plans to reengage with the community. We've also hosted, I hosted an online meeting for the residents here this past weekend. A couple attended, but did not get the response, or in terms of the number of people we intend to communicate with. We've initially got a good response into our original plat with the planning board. We appreciate their, or with the Department of Planning, I apologize. And so, we've been excited about this opportunity, but we're really looking to be a strong community player here in terms of, you know, doing something that's going to be great for the site. And so, we're really just, we're looking to get further. There's some other things in terms of grading with a waiver on a street, and some other things that need to be addressed before we can get this, you know, to a final decision. So I think the opportunity for a layover to further address some of those items is going to be in everyone's best interest so that we can continue to engage our neighbors in the community as well. And just for quick, you know, reference, I don't know if this can show up on there or not. So this is just kind of a general rendering of, and which is what we tend to share with communities. I think the biggest concern was the community is what is this going to look like at the end? And so, we're looking to build nice, beautiful, and affordable homes for this area that's going to fit the neighborhood very well. And so, we're looking to, again, further engage with the neighbors and with the planning committee so we can, you know, figure out what's going to be the highest and best use of this property and figure out what's the correct density that's going to fit the neighborhood and everybody can be acceptable and amenable to, so. Joe, anything you want to add? Okay, and I have Joe Foley, he's our civil engineer on the project here, if you have any questions for him as well. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to accommodate and see how we can best move this thing forward.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come forward, sir, give your name and address. Give your name and address.
Dean Olrich, sixty-six zero seven Country Club Road. I live near the neighborhood. I thought there was a letter that was supposed to come to the planning board, signed by residents of the area.
Yeah.
There is?
Yep.
How many people signed that, please? We, we know that the city planning board rejected a proposal for twenty-three houses on this location sometime in two thousand and ten. We don't feel that the current project is consistent with the character and standards of the neighborhood. A change from R two to R four is not consistent, in our opinion, with Omaha's current zoning plan. And it would be very unusual and out of step with the neighborhood. We're also concerned about the developer's experience. We don't know, think he's been involved with a project of this size before. I guess that's about it. We certainly would like to ask the planning committee to delay this, so more conversations could be had with the neighbors, because every argument we had was not acted upon. It's still the same proposal that was brought to us in our meeting in July. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dean. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Nolan, did you want to add? You can come up. Did you want to add anything to what Dean had said?
Yeah, so we are, we're also considering alternatives to figure out, you know, our biggest challenge in terms of this project was to get the number of lots that offset the development costs. And so, we're working on some alternatives to find some balance, and that's part of our next step as well, is to figure out, you know, how can we get to that, you know, level playing field with them, as well as in terms of the cost of the development. So that's truly what our intention is at this point, so it would really be in our best interest, and I feel everyone's best interest at this time, to lay this over, so we can continue those efforts.
Hey, Nolan, when you start doing that, could you, you know, meet more frequently or with the neighbors and kind of tell them where you're going, so that, you know, maybe you can get some of their advice and input, so that you can have a stronger project?
Yes, sir, that's the intention at this point. Fortunately, Kevin is doing better, and to speak to their comments, I'm not coming into this as new. I'm new in the point of my name leading this, but the parties that I'm working with are, I meet regularly with Gene Graves. I'm sure Gene's been in front of you guys plenty of times. I also have Kevin Irish, who's also developed, between the two of them, they've developed probably five thousand lots in Omaha. So I'm being counseled by very smart, experienced individuals in terms of this. This just happens to be kind of a, more or less a pilot, I wouldn't say a pilot, but kind of initial starting point for, to me to kind of take out, take this out on my own, but I'm also, you know, meeting with them on a very regular basis, and meeting with experts like Joe Foley here, that have been in the industry for thirty years. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel, we're just trying to, you know, move things forward and be a positive light for our community, and hopefully bring some affordable housing into this space, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, the recommendation is for layover, you know, more specifically related to the requested waiver for street grade. Chapter fifty-three has a ten percent maximum grade requirement. The proposed Glendale Avenue exceeds the eleven percent. So planning, more specifically, Public Works, would like a little bit more information and, you know, analysis of whether that waiver request is truly needed. You know, we, there have been multiple requests on this site over the years, and I don't recall there being a street grade waiver request for those. So just some further analysis of those, and there were a few lot widths that were less than the required fifty feet in the proposed R four district. We measure that at the front yard setback, so there was a few of those that needed to be cleaned up. And obviously, we encourage, strongly encourage, you know, coordination with neighborhood and city council members, just to continue those further discussions. Now, the proposal for R four zoning is compliant with the master plan regarding low-density residential, but yes, there is R two zoning directly to the northeast and south. There is R four zoning across Seventy-second Street on the west. That being said, the official recommendation is to layover to allow additional coordination between the city and the applicant on the request of waiver for street grading.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to layover, second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to layover approved.
Okay, agenda item number eighteen, case C twelve dash twenty dash one seven two. Applicant Michael and Rhonda P V. Request preliminary and final plat approval of P V Village Estates, a minor plat outside city limits with waivers to section fifty-three eight two G, street width, fifty-three nine three street surfacing, including curb and gutter, and fifty-three nine nine sidewalks. Property is located within an E D Environmental Resources overlay district. Location, west of sixty-sixth Street and Twin Brooks Plaza. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, thank you. My name's Rhonda P V. I live at one three 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 four North Sixty-sixth Street in Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm here seeking approval of preliminary and final plat for our property. We're subdividing it, or hoping to subdivide it, so that our, two of our children can build there. I don't know what I should be telling you. I know that in the letter that I got, it said you hadn't seen the, and our, the N D Q information. I have copies of those. They did approve them on the twentieth. I just didn't get hard copies until yesterday's mail, but I did get email copies last Friday, which was after, when you talked. And I know that you had some concerns about the final plat, and I did get in touch with Boundaryline this morning and have them add the easements in, and have them make the corrections. I gave those copies to Mr. Carter before the meeting here.
Well, and Rhonda, just one moment, we did update the recommendation report, so I apologize if we were not able to get you a copy because of that information submitted. We did tweak it and are recommending approval of the final plat as well, so because of that N D Q information. So we can get you a copy after your case here, but just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Oh, would be over here. Unless you have questions for me, I guess I don't have anything else to present to you.
Okay. Thank you, Rhonda. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Eric?
I'd like to call Ryan Haas down to the podium, please. Considering you've sat here through this meeting, I'd love to give you an opportunity to speak regarding Sixty-sixth Street, and we did kind of have a change of direction here from when the board last saw this. Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. Just to summarize briefly, the issue with Sixty-sixth Street, we are recommending a waiver of pavement, just due to the fact that the Douglas County Engineers Office reached out, and for a number of unique factors here, specific to this site, their analysis indicated that it would be actively difficult to maintain the street if it was paved, and so they asked that we refrain from requiring that at this time, and that they would help facilitate the pavement as part of a future, separate, as development occurs to the north at, potentially in the future, that the county engineers office would help pave this section of Sixty-sixth Street at that time. So fairly unique, very rare, actually, that we would recommend waiver of the pavement requirement, but it's in response to the request from the county engineers office.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. So yes, sir, as Ryan mentioned, there are three chapter fifty-three waiver requests as part of the street width, street servicing, and then sidewalks. The first one with street width, it's actually not applicable, so the report does recommend denial of that, but it just doesn't apply. So it is unique to support the waiver of, to not provide improvement of the street, but you do have the letter from the county engineers office in your packet, as well as what Ryan had just mentioned. So it is a unique situation. And then the third waiver request is for sidewalks. Waiver of sidewalks is commonly supported in the North Hills overlay district due to the unique characteristics in the grade, in the soils in that area. So yes, you do have an updated recommendation report, which I believe we've now gotten to the applicant. The change for that is a recommendation of approval of the final plat. We were waiting on final documentation from Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality regarding approval of the septic system for the lots less than three acres in size. So we are comfortable with the information that we have received for that, and staff is recommending, let me read through, I gotta go through these here, denial of the waiver of section fifty-three eight two G street width, that was the one not applicable, approval of the waiver of section fifty-three nine three street surfacing, approval of the waiver of section fifty-three nine nine sidewalks, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the three conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval.
Do we have a motion?
A motion for denial of the waiver of section fifty-three eight two G street width, not applicable. Approval of the waiver of section fifty-three nine three street surfacing, including curb and gutter. Approval of the waiver of section fifty-three nine nine sidewalks. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the three conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, agenda item number thirty-four, we had a gentleman... No, for, okay, we had agenda item number thirty-four where that was being pulled off, as did that gentleman leave?
Yeah.
Oh, he did, okay.
Those who have James in public works, just come on, baby.
All right, James?
Yeah.
Come on. Yep, I'll read it. I'm sorry. Agenda item number thirty-four, case C fourteen dash twenty dash one ninety. Applicant Planning Board, request vacation of the north-south alley located south of Indiana Street and abutting Nebraska Department of Transportation right-of-way along North Freeway, along with vacation of Indiana Street east of North Twenty-eighth Ave. Location, southeast of Indiana Street and North Twenty-eighth Ave. I don't need to ask for proponents and opponents, do I, Eric? Well, are there any proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. James, come forward.
James Thompson, Public Works. This is a vacation in conjunction with agenda item twelve of this hearing today. Autumn is trying to clean up some of the, along with selling the, and disposing of the lots, clean up the alleys that border it. And Luis Trejo of nine three four North Twenty-eighth Ave was the one that had wanted to pull it off the agenda. I'm going to address his concerns, and so is Autumn. So there's nothing really that we would have to say, other than what Eric would recommend, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. Any comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Staff recommends approval subject to retaining sewer and drainage easements along the entire length of the right-of-way to be vacated.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve subject to retaining sewer and drainage easements along the eastern length of the right-of-way to be vacated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion on the, for approval of the pre-minute, pre-minute, pre-meeting minutes? There, I'll get it. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion for the public hearing minutes?
Motion approved, public hearing, minutes.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Did I miss number nineteen?
Motion adjourn. Number nineteen, I'm sorry, did I?
Consent intended for approval.
Okay. We missed anything? You want to come forward? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Nineteen.
Yeah, that was on consent for approval, and we read that at the beginning of the meeting. And it was passed for approval.
Am I still able to make a, make a statement concerning agenda item nineteen?
Um...
You could submit something to us, come and get in the file, to go to city council.
I want to apologize if you didn't understand, but yeah, the meeting's been closed, that's already been voted on. I'm sorry.
But it was listed on the agenda as a, as a regular agenda item, not a consent agenda item?
No, I have it on mine as approval.
Could you probably just look at the regular agenda?
I'm looking at the regular agenda.
Yeah, see, the consent agenda is like this, it has the consent items that are listed, they talk about at the beginning of the meeting, and then they go through the numbers, and if you had wanted to take it off, you would have had to say...
Yes.
Was there a motion?
Did we vote on, we haven't voted on adjournment yet, have we?
No, we have not.
Let's go ahead and adjourn. Go ahead and... Yes.
Okay. Just a second, ma'am. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Just hold on, miss?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay, then, at the beginning of the meeting, after I said that we had down here in front of us a consent agenda, and that you were welcome to come down and pick up that consent agenda, and then I read the cases that were on for consent, and number nine, case number nineteen, I even read it and said it is on for approval, and asked if anybody wanted it to be pulled off of the consent agenda.
I got this agenda from the council.
Okay, I am sorry, ma'am, that...
I didn't say my key.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to?
Yeah, there'll be, I mean, we can talk, staff can talk to you right now, or whenever you want. There's an opportu, it will go to city, it will go to city, it will go to city council, so we'll have opportunity.
You'll have an opportunity there.
Because planning boards are recommending body to city council. Nothing's final until city council votes on things.